Eric Anderson, April Pinko, Eric Happy Barclay, Eric Anderson, Richard Levine, Ed Marin, David Casino, Colleen Stone, Peter Conley, end of period.
Here.
Resolve that superintendent of schools recommends that a board of education approve the agenda. Motion by Richard.
Second.
Second by Debbie. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I have it. Okay, public comment. You have anybody for public comment? We have nothing at this time. Next is the spotlight on education. Innovative manufacturing partnerships.
Just a very brief introduction. We're going to be needing to hop over on the other side. But as I pointed out in your updates, we have an opportunity courtesy of the high school's effort, and most particularly Mr. Patton, to partner with Clinton Community College on a pretty interesting endeavor, creating new opportunities for our students who may or may not be choosing a college as a career, but in fact want to understand the options available to them. They have a nice little partnership experience that he self-craft, and tonight I'm going to do a short PowerPoint and brief explanation to fill you in on all that information. And we're going to be over on this side of the group folks and get a look at the PowerPoint.
So thank you all for giving me the opportunity to present this this evening. This is something that actually Mr. Emo and I have talked about doing some things that incorporate 21st century skills and something other than programs for college-bound students for quite some time. And we've gone to some meetings and talked about things, and finally we're getting some traction. So I'll show you a little bit of the history here. I'm sorry. I'm going to actually go through the slides and tell you what they say. So the program is Innovative Manufacturing Partnerships: Advancing Careers Through Technical Training. That's what IMPACT stands for. And the roots of this program come from basically two primary meetings some of you were at. One is the Connecting Communities Schools and Businesses Forum that was in Lake Placid last year. I attended that. I know some of you were there as well. We had open dialogue between businesses, students, and school leaders about how changes in technology, the economy, and global competition can change the workplace. And we also engage in discussions focused on partnerships between local schools, businesses, and how these partnerships can effectively help young adults achieve their aspirations while at the same time providing businesses with highly skilled employees. There's a lot of conversation about the fact that there seems to be a disconnect between what we're doing in schools and what specifically technical career-oriented employers are seeing when they have students come as employees. And how could we put schools and businesses together so that schools knew more about what businesses needed and could provide that training for students? Okay, and the other clue to this is that Manufacturing Day this October at Clinton Community College, and here we've got some very important information about manufacturing. For every dollar of goods produced, manufacturing generates an additional $1.43 into the economy. Each manufacturing job creates 2.91 jobs in another sector. Manufacturers are responsible for almost two-thirds of research and development. Manufacturing workers have the highest tenure in the private sector. Ninety percent of manufacturing workers have health benefits. I'm hearing all these things, thinking, these are things that we would want for our kids. Seventy-eight percent of manufacturing workers get retirement contributions from their employees, employers, and the average salary of a manufacturing worker is $77,000. Now, I saw that number and I thought, that's ridiculous, but that is a fact, okay? So not to say that a high school student is going to go out and start making $77,000, but what was really reinforced at Manufacturing Day and by the companies that were there, including like Fujitsu and International Paper and Bombardier, is that if you get in to a manufacturing field and you take opportunities to receive additional education that the company will pay for, you can have a very good career working for private manufacturers and earn a very good wage by the time you end up retiring. Sixty-seven percent of manufacturers report a moderate to severe shortage of available qualified workers. And that gets back to the conversation that we had in Lake Placid where there's this disconnect between what we're doing in school and the workers that we're providing to corporations who need the work to be done. So here we are at Manufacturing Day, and I'm having all these thoughts about what does this have to do with what we're doing in Bigman Town and what does this have to do with why I spent my day here and what we do for kids? And I had a conversation with Paul Domenicus, who I went to high school with, and sort of know. He's the director of workforce development, and I expressed my interest in collaborating and developing for Bigman Town students. And I said, Paul, we've done a lot of talking. Paul and I both have degrees in philosophy, so that's okay with us, but there's more to life than talk, talk, talk. I said, we need to do something. And then I gave it some time, Helen Gardner. Gave it a little bit of time, and Paul called and said, Joe Ha, we are doers. And we had a meeting at Clinton Community College with Paul, with Dave Corrier from ETS, which is a local staffing service, with Michelle Armani from the WIB, which is the Workforce Investment Board, from Debbie Pettit from SciTech, which is a private, or nonprofit organization, and myself. And the result of that was the IMPACT program. That's where we kind of came up with what we're going to do. So what is it? Phase one. This is this year, starting this month. Expose students to manufacturing careers and the skill sets required to be successful in those careers. It will include four trips, one each in November, January, March, and May. Each month's trip will include an activity at Clinton Community College to introduce manufacturing concepts, which means they'll go into a lab, they'll have a lab experience doing some sort of electrical something.
You'll have to determine later.
You know, it'll be some sort of a lab activity where they'll have some experiences with the tools and equipment that you would use if you were an electrician. The idea is to get them to understand what sort of additional training training would look like to do some of the manufacturing jobs that are out there. Company tours, and Dave Corrier from ETS is going to help us with this. He's got a lot of connections in the area with Schluter Systems, with Bombardier, Novaboss, all sorts of companies who are very interested in attracting skilled workers and are interested in kind of promoting themselves so that once kids have become skilled workers, they say, I want to go work there. And conversations with faculty and industry professionals. Phase two. This is after this year, and we've gone through those visits. Phase two, enroll in Clinton Community College for their summer program. And they'll be doing two things there. One is the National Work Readiness Credential, which trains them to listen actively, solve problems, and make decisions, cooperate with others, resolve conflicts and negotiate, observe critically, take responsibility for learning, breathe with understanding, and use math to solve problems. And these are those 21st century skills that we've talked about at some of our meetings. And they're things that, you know, things students can learn through high school experiences, but they're not specifically taught. Additionally, the National Work Readiness Credential is a credential that is nationally recognized, and it's gaining a lot of traction in our local area, is saying, if you have this credential, in case you have some skills, you might not be somebody who is highly trained, but you're certainly trainable. Technical skills training, this is the other branch of the summer program at Clinton Community College, as a certified production technician. And the skills taught there in that program are perform preventative maintenance and routine repair, monitor indicators to ensure correct operations, perform all housekeeping to maintain production schedule, and recognize potential maintenance issues with basic production systems, including knowledge of when to inform maintenance personnel about problems with electrical systems, automatic systems, hydraulic systems, machine automation systems, lubrication processes, bearings, couplings, and belts and chain drives. And the result, we hope, will be jobs. The goal will be that the students who complete this program will actually be able to slip into a position that Dave Corrier, again with ETS, will be able to actually connect them to an employer, and that they will come out of the summer program with a job. Jobs that are available for people who have completed that program are industrial maintenance technician, industrial maintenance electrician, and mill ready. So, and that's the beginning. You know, and part of the idea here is that kids who do this will realize there's a value to continuing my education, not necessarily at a four-year liberal arts school, but in a technical trade. There are a lot of technical trades that can be learned that will significantly improve your, number one, chances of becoming employed, and also your salary, as well as the types of jobs that you have. And that's it.
How many people, how many students do you figure are going to be?
So the, how many people this year, right now? And let me begin by saying, this is at no cost to the district. So the limitation, the limitation right now for us is transportation, okay? Because that's a big one, and I was clear with everybody, this cannot cost us a penny. So we have one man from Clinton Community College, and we have 12 spots. Yep.
What students are you targeting? Like what age range?
Seniors this year. This is a pilot program, okay? So this is seniors only. This is students who have identified themselves to their counselors as people who have no interest in going to college. And we made a list of all those kids, and we invited everybody. We invited about 30, 35 kids. We had 22 of them voluntarily show up to our informational session, and have had a lot of interest in terms of, can I have an application? And applications are due tomorrow, so we'll find out how very interested they are. And hopefully we'll have more than 12, is my goal, and pick the top 12.
Is this addressed to soft skills concerns?
Yeah, those soft skills concerns, I believe that's, those would be addressed in the National Work Readiness Credential.
So are other schools also, are other area high schools also doing this? Or is this something that here?
Just us.
That's wonderful.
Just us, yep.
I'm sure there'll be others jumping on the bandwagon, who wants these tapes out. This is a great idea.
I, I, we're correct, yeah, yeah.
Great idea.
So it's only 12 now because of parents' situation?
Correct. The idea is to get this, to run this program and see how it goes. See how many students are really interested in it. See how many students not only go through the approach that there are to go on throughout the school year, but also enroll in the summer program. The summer program as it exists right now is grant-funded. It's free. It's anything. That is in flux right now. They have reapplied for that grant. If it's, if it's not grant-funded, again, it's $500. So it's not, it's not a really, really expensive program.
$500 for the whole program or per student?
Per student, right, right. If you, if at the end of the school year, these students decide, I want to take this month-long training program and work on my two credentials, it'll cost them $500.
And was compared to voting for $10,000, something like that.
So, you know, like I said, this is a pilot. It's the beginning. It's the first stage. It's no cost to the district. I think that, you know, from my perspective, what we need to do is run the program, see how much student interest there is, and then at some point have a look at bringing some of the elements of the program to high school, so that it's not a summer program, so that it is a, you know, you can work on your National Work Readiness Credential in high school. I think a lot from there.
I'm sorry, is there a question?
So how do the, how are the students that participated in this differentiated from the ones that choose to go to CD Tech and then go to CCC? Or would they not have to go to CD Tech to go to CCC afterwards?
What's the deal with this program this year?
Well, what's behind the goal for next year thereafter? What would be the difference?
My personal goal is that we would probably start to identify some kids who are going to college who aren't really sure why they're going to college, and that we would be attracting some kids who are very intelligent and college material, you know, but would do very well in a technical program as well. And so in terms of the CD Tech piece, that it's a little bit confusing because those kids are learning a specific trade. There's no reason why you couldn't learn a specific trade, then get your National Work Readiness Credential, and your maintenance technician credential as well. A lot of the trades that are taught at CD Tech work very well in a manufacturing facility, but those two credentials say, not only do I know how to, for instance, weld, but I also know how to talk to people. I also know how to keep my area clean.
Function within the workforce.
Function within the workforce.
And the working class, just on the problem.
Right.
Something like that.
Exactly.
What I call it.
Right. Did I, does that answer your question, or am I getting at it?
There's still, there's still a certain amount of vagueness between the pool that you're going after for CD Tech versus this program. It's kind of, is there competition, you know, kind of thing?
Well, there's no competition because CD Tech students can participate in this program. There's nothing about this program that says you can't participate if you're a CD Tech student.
I guess if I'm one of the students, I'm having to decide why do one versus the other or both. What is the incentive for those students?
Well, I would say that the incentive is, if you're a CD Tech student and you're learning a trade such as, let's just stick with welding.
Sure.
And you're learning to be a good welder, it would be a very good idea for you, and you would become far more marketable in our local area as a welder if in addition to your certificate of welding, you also had your National Work Readiness credential. Because that's going to teach you something besides welding. It's going to teach you the soft skills of negotiating with your team, you know, that you're working with. And that's something that, that's something that employers in our area are really starting to look for. It's not just a high school diploma, but in addition to that, what else have you done to demonstrate that you have the ability to work with people?
I think I know what I was asking. On the targeting part, are you looking for kids that are, okay, we already have kids that are old with CD Tech. Is this for somebody who has to make up their mind, I don't want to be a welder, I don't want to be an electrician, but I'm willing to go and take a look? Is that more of the focus, saying, is there trying to take people from CD Tech who already know what they want to do? Say, well, this is open for these people who probably would have college for a semester and drop out?
Well, I think that this program actually is, really, it's to take, for instance, somebody who's at CD Tech and say, okay, so you have some technical skills, now what are you going to do with them? Because that's the, another piece of the high school piece is, I graduated from high school, and now what am I going to do? And in this specific program, this is a program that's, it is about manufacturing. It is to address the needs of our local manufacturers. It was disheartening to me when I heard that when, for instance, the huge wind towers went up, most of the people who came and did that work came from somewhere else, because we didn't have the people in our area that had the skills that were necessary to do that work. And those could have been our kids. I mean, not now, but had we had this program 10 years ago, those could have been our kids. Instead of having people from somewhere else coming in and taking jobs that our local kids could have had.
Now, when you're in this program, you thought, ETS working to connect you with a job.
Exactly.
Where if you got out of CD Tech, you're going to always try to find one.
This is that, this is kind of that middle piece.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is not, this is not to try to discourage anybody from CD Tech. This is not to encourage anybody to do something other than go to college. This is, this really is about saying, we have lots and lots of manufacturing facilities in our area, and we have a lot of kids who are graduating from high school, and they're not necessarily ready to go to work in a manufacturing facility, and we're hiring people from all over the country to come and work in these manufacturing facilities. And there are great careers in the manufacturing facilities.
In the vision to action meetings, in the presentations that we attended, one of the things that they said is so sorely lacking with these kids, and we could discuss the reasons all night long why it is, but the soft, the soft skills, the communication skills, the responsibility, the showing up to work on time, showing up to an interview, prepared, being ready to work, and it sounds like this really fills that gap and will get these kids ready to be job-ready. And they need it so desperately because the market's so tough out there. I think this is fantastic. My hat's off to you.
What if you had, what if you had 25 people applying to 12 slots? I mean, everything to do with it.
It would be difficult, but we will.
What's the criteria?
Well, I would, I mean, I would think we'll be looking at attendance. Be a big, a really big one, because the last thing we want to do is have a slot taken and then have the student not show up on the days that they need to be there. So attendance is always a big one for us, and it's one that we struggle with. I also think that probably we'll be looking at the rapport they have in our building, or have they been criticized, have they sworn at their teachers, have they had issues like that? And then finally, we'll be looking at, we need this to be a successful program, so are they going to be academically able to get through the summer piece of it as well if they decide to?
I'd like to underscore a couple of comments on the last question. Part, as we all know, part of life's lessons is understanding if you prepare yourself for your life. And so part of the selection process, I'm sure, is that about the counselors, the parents, and the criteria to get this certificate made very, very clear to the students. And it may be, unfortunately, the harsh first time someone has heard, you mean, I go to school and I can't get into this program? Well, going is, showing up is just one step. There's a responsibility of getting ready to show up and do what you want to do with a passion for the rest of your life. So it seems to me that part of the criteria is going to involve asking the counselors and the parents and youngsters, youngsters, young men and women, listen, this isn't a replacement for or something odd to do. This is leading you to a job. But now is the time to make the commitment to say, I'm ready to do what is required of me so that I can be eligible at the end of this journey, if you will, to get that job. That's exciting. It's also exciting that Clinton Community College and the business partners that Mr. Patton spoke enough, have stepped out of their shell a little bit and saying, we'll be the nurturers and the guiders. We'll be with them when they go through this. And not everybody's going to be able to walk out of school in today's economy and say, for a semester, maybe a summer, there may be a $34,000 job waiting for me and a credential that says, if I can't get one here, you can go anywhere with a credential. And the employer has got five candidates to pick from, four of them don't have a credential, and somebody from Bigman Town says, here's mine. It says many things to that prospective employer.
In the selection process, I think we need to be very rigorous because as a first-time thing, you know, employers are going to get a picture of Bigman Town. They sent 20 kids to there, 10 of them fall for it, 10 of them don't do it. We need, we need to show employers that our kids are qualified, are going to be qualified, they're going to do the work, and that they will care for. If you send the kids there and they don't make it, we're not doing it so very good.
You know, that's really, that challenge is more real today than ever before, and it's not a, I'm already, it's not a hidden fact. That's why Clinton is partnering with this effort. They're saying, we've got all kinds of students who are, they enroll in South Korea, they enroll in alcohol, and all of these areas, but there's also spending, I can appreciate we can circulate a lot of time on remediation. And the remediation isn't unnecessarily the hard skills of what got you to our front door, it's on the soft skills, committed to show up on time, do the job right. So by injecting the model, Work Readiness Credential, it is saying, this has criteria with it for which you can't avoid. And your instructors and your workforce partners are going to be judging you on this, and they're going to give a report on you.
Are we ever going to get to the point where everybody's, you get soft skills and everybody needs them?
Who would have, who would have thought, maybe 25, 30 years ago, they needed talking about, talking about showing up to work on time? Like, yeah, you're right. I think nothing but, like, the question, but, but then three years ago, when we first started talking about something, Tony Wagner and folks like that, that's what they're saying around the entire country. Employers aren't questioning nearly as much anymore the innate ability skills of young people to do the work. They're questioning the idea that somebody's supposed to do something for me before I come and do the work. And those soft skills are worth their weight in gold. You get a person who understands the importance of coming to work on time, who shows up even earlier. You get a person who understands, that's a tough job, but I can handle it. Turn it over to me, watch me go. Those individuals are going to be the sours, and they're going to be the flyies of the future. They may not be as skilled as a counterpart, but the workers, the employers are saying, we can teach the skill. What we can't teach is that innate drive, that commitment to show up, do your best, and trust that if it's a problem, I might be a part of it, as opposed to who has the problem, anytime a problem comes up. So I agree with you. And just way back to Corrie, if you don't mind, Mr. Patton.
You said that the program was grant-funded, but who's providing the grant? Is it a federal grant, is it a state grant, is it private sector?
And to clarify, it's the summer program that is grant-funded?
Right.
Okay. And I do not know the answer to that question, that grant is done through Clinton Community College?
I know they're continually, back to your question, I know Clinton, I don't know about this particular one, but Clinton is routinely seeking grants to expand its opportunities for students, so it wouldn't surprise me, there's probably a federal-related grant, especially if it's got a timeframe on it, you know, one, two, three years, and then it's off. Probably a federal grant would be my guess.
The last thing I'd like to ask is, if it goes to the point where there's no longer a grant funding it, could you come back to the board at that time, and then we can discuss and say, we as a board want to support it, even if it isn't grant-funded? Or you only have so many slots because we have a few more slots if we want to, or if we wanted to provide grants, right? I'm saying that we would, but at that point, we'd rather just let it die on the vine. I'd like to go back to the.
Sure. What a wonderful conversation to have when a new program in fact solves a problem that meets the needs of young people and gets them prepared for a world of work, career, or college. What a nice problem to have, and say, we've got a good thing going here, we've just got to move forward and keep it going. Nice problem.
I think our ultimate goal as a district, and I hope every district does that way, is to develop students that have lifelong skills that bring them past graduating from high school. And I think for a lot of students, especially at-risk or students who are undecided of their future, I think that this will, is an excellent opportunity and kind of bridge that gap and give them the opportunity to investigate possible avenues other than gas station attendance and things like that. So when they actually are employed full-time, that they actually have a skill, not even a skill, an income that they can actually live on instead of a low wage, a minimum wage income.
And you mentioned our.
So I think it's very valuable.
Yeah, you mentioned our at-risk kids, and one of the. And one of the things I see about this program potentially, especially if we have the opportunity to grow it, is that right now we have kids who choose not to be with us because we are primarily a college preparation program. And they are bored and they don't want to go to college and they don't understand why we're wasting their time with it. And if we can develop this program and more programs like this, I think that we will retain more students who are interested in doing this kind of thing. So you're talking basically about whether you're in foreign countries, is there a time that they're making decisions, this kid isn't going to go to, go to college and they're going to follow their path? I'm talking about this program right now. No, I, I, I'm not saying, all I'm saying is, what you're saying is, that's for a league. At, at some point, you could say, if you know this kid isn't going to go to college, why are they taking trips and stuff like that? Philosophically, philosophically, I think that at some point, people are going to have to decide, either I want to have a college path or I don't want to have a college path, I want to go do something else. And that is going to be a very difficult conversation for us all to have. I hope that we do have it at some point, but it involves a lot of emotions with parents as much as it does with kids themselves. So, Mr. King, did you have a question? Okay.
So the, the ready-to-certificate is something that's done, and we'll talk about only for seniors, right?
Correct.
Is there any kind of a segue to start the students thinking about this, the ethics and the importance of the soft skills starting in ninth grade? Is there any kind of transition program? It doesn't have to be involved, but a few hours here and a few hours there, it allows them, before they get to senior high, by the time their personalities are pretty well established, why isn't there something that sets the catalyst earlier on?
I think that most certainly a curriculum that addresses the national work readiness credential could be developed and, and that could be taught as either an elective or as a board-required course, there's no question about that. So I, I would love to see that.
And we, we do, we do know already from the part, from the business partners, some of which Mr. Batt has mentioned, that there's a very strong desire and willingness to set up expertships and shadowing, job shadowing experiences at a much earlier age in seniors and part to break, if you will, that notion that you've got to be going to college if you're going to have success in tomorrow's world. Boy, there are a whole bunch of two-year or less training programs that will position a youngster at a much cheaper rate for a new career if that's their application. They truly want to be an electrician. You don't need to go two years to college, change your major and decide that you want to go get an electrician certificate. We can start that out.
Right. The guy who makes, if you can make more money, the guy who broke it.
I guess just to chime in and also answer your question, Mr. Mann, this school year across the, you know, New York State Common Core State Standards have been developed and adopted and they're continuing to evolve. And one of the major focuses of those standards, K-12, are those soft skills, the 21st century skill sets. So the working in groups, working with partners, working with people who you don't necessarily get along with, coming to collaborations, those sort of skills are starting to be worked on more and more in the class now that we have a philosophy where the teachers become more of the facilitator and less of the class director.
Right, right.
So those soft skills will be something that we'll see come along through a full process, sort of full curriculum.
Also with the work readiness certificate, there's money for instructor, there's money to take the tests. And I did go to the seminar at Lake Classic. And there are companies around here willing to pay for that for the students in the schools. So it would be under, under the, the schools would have to pay for it.
And.
Companies around here are more than willing to pay. And as far as that goes, there were a lot of companies at that. And the main thing was the soft skills because their main, their main problem was the soft skills.
Yeah, and, and I want to just stress, this is the very beginning of this and we are the only people, they were the only school in this area who has anything like this going on. And the reason that it's for seniors and it's as small and as finite as it is is because as a group, myself and the other stakeholders, we really want it to be successful. We are hoping that there's, there's a chance that the WIB, the Workforce Investment Board, will offer a grant this year as they did last year. And a program that is very similar to this may be developed and written as a grant to expand it for the future. Last year, they offered a grant, we, but we partnered with several local area school districts as well as Bozies, spent a lot of time writing the grant and then one school district did not submit the appropriate paperwork, so none of us got it. So we're hoping for an opportunity like that to come along again.
I guess by way of final comment, for those who have heard me talking about a larger grant that we've submitted or participating in, we should all, if this kind of topic excites you or gets you thinking very positive thoughts like we are, keep your toes and fingers crossed because by December, early December, we'll know about that other grant. And then in that grant is a, is a head-on expand many of the things that Mr. Batt has already managed with a very, very small amount of money. So we're excited about the opportunity for students. Thank you.
Okay, our next item is reports, the audit report. Presenter, Chief Michael Bowards from Conroy, Florida, Gombe.
Evening, everybody. My name is Michael Bowards, I'm the external auditor. On the auditor, I come to make sure the numbers that are in the financial statements are correct and that it's connected accurately. I think everybody has a copy of the large document, page one. We're just going to go over a few, a few of the items. Page one is just the opinion that we gave, it's unqualified, it's just the highest level opinion that we give. It basically says that these financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of Dayton County School District. That's what you're looking for, that kind of thing.
That's a good thing.
Return to page 13. This is a statement on that asset. It's in the format of a four-profit business. Assets under, in the top section, it's 48 million of assets, that includes your buildings, your equipment, computers, all that cost. Middle section is your liabilities and the last section is your, your fund balance, your net assets. One thing I want to point out on the liability is that last line that says, other post-employment benefits, 27 million. That's an actuarial calculation done by actuaries and that's the present value of your future cost of retirement for health insurance. Okay? That's not the total cost as of today, the total cost is around 90 million. But they allow us to approve over a 30-year period to bring that number in gradually now all the time. So that's about $7 million a year that this gets hit as an expense for those benefits. It's a large number. And every district has to report that liability. So what that does is bring your, your, your net assets, they went negative this year, they're negative 5 million. That'll continue to go negative.
It's first year, right?
Sorry?
It's first year.
Yeah. That was, that was put in just to get this people in charge of the districts, you know, quantify what those benefits are worth now, what it actually does cost. Page 15. Left set of numbers is the general fund. Again, this is another balance sheet, this, this is the balance sheet that the district keeps their books and metrics. Okay? So I want to point out at the bottom, total fund balance at the end of the year, 7.5 million. This is as of June 30th.
7.5.
Now, some of this fund balance is reserved, restricted, in legal reserves, that's allowed for by the state. And those are listed just underneath the fund balance, both under restricted, tax tertiary reserve, unemployment insurance, workers' comp and retirement. These are money that are put in these reserves to pay for these future, when these future expenditures, make no mistake, we use the money that's in these reserves for that. The second line from the bottom says appropriated fund balance. Of the 7 million, the board has chosen to appropriate 2 million to next year's budget. And the last line says unassigned 2.5 million, that's what's left. Same column under general. This is a statement of revenues and expenses, so it's not going to loss for the year. Revenues on top, expenditures, other uses at the bottom, third line from the bottom, excess of expenditures over revenue, 1.3 million. So the district lost 1.3 million last year. So they used up somewhat, 1.3 of their fund balance. Started out at 8.9, brought it down to 7.25. Jumping ahead to page 44. I just want to point out the third column from the right, references the school lunch program. The school lunch had a loss for the year, third line from the bottom, 31,000 dollars. And that brought your fund balance to a negative 108. And I believe the 1213 budget, budget, I've got that.
Yes, there was a board food, over-approving budget, $104,000 in the fund transfer to help offset that. That accumulated fund balance deficit of that 108,000 represents several years. So 1213 budget process included what our auditors had commented on in past years is that we need to do something to address that, just let that deficit sit out there and continue to grow.
Jumping ahead to page 59. This page reflects that we have, we have to report any findings that we see during the audit. There's not, non-compliance issues with laws and regulations. There was one and that's caused by the excess fund balance. New York State law says you can retain 4% of next year's budget as, as fund balance. We're supposed to give the rest back to the next year. As with many schools in the area, you were in excess of that 4% threshold. You were at 6.89%, which is a, which is down considerably from last year and the year before. Okay, so it's not a huge deal, but we still have to report on it, that we violated that 4%. So, and this goes to the state, so the state's aware of this. Again, most of the schools have the same, same situation. Anything else, Mary, you want me to point out?
Just the, the percent, the 6.89, which is limited to 4% under S E D rules, the amount, what that amounts to for the excess of sitting in fund balance is 1,65,981 dollars. So effectively, in prior years, what the board's methodology has been is to use that excess fund balance over a number of years to offset the budget. So in this year's, the 1213 budget, earlier, we had mentioned that what was appropriated was 2.1 million of that fund balance. So this excess fund balance, where we thought we wouldn't have anything available for 13, 14, or 14, 15, there is now potentially a million, 65 dollars, 65,000 could be used to help offset some reserves or it could also be used to help balance future budgets, specifically through anything at 13 and 14. And not having the 2.1 million we actually used this year, there's something there.
Relatively mild winter didn't hurt us on that break.
There, there were multiple reasons of why and how we ended up with a million dollars. Mild, mild winter and savings and utility costs was one. Another was some early implementation of changes in special education classrooms and bringing classrooms here up to capacity rather than sending additional students over Bozies, which created some significant savings for the district. Actually, in 2011, 12, what we had budgeted for some of those moves to take place in 1213 and have taken place in 1213, we were able to do some early implementation in some instances and save on those funds additionally. We went back and took the grants from past years and were able to recapture some expenditures to get reimbursements on a prior year grant project, specifically summer school, that resulted in a close to $400,000 of extra revenue that we didn't have when we built some revenues out to the county that we hadn't done previously, that was about another $100,000. It was a combination of several different items getting us to this point where we were able to show this that we can work here.
Michael, I'd like to thank you there for your comment on page 59 here, that all of these challenges combined suggest that Alice Carrie's kind of fund balance may have not been excessive in all of reality. And to combine fund balance reserve and significant school budget cuts to minimize the impact of the tax rate, I appreciate you putting that in there.
Well, that, that actually comes from the district itself. That's correct. I can say credit for that.
Back on page 13, when we talked about the other post-employment benefits, how we're now required to approve so much over a year and put them as a liability on the balance sheet. And so over the next course of, how many over years, our, our balance sheet is going to continue to go negative. And speaking to Mary, there is no reserve account that we can set aside dollars to take for this liability.
That's correct, there's no funding mechanism yet.
So there's no funding mechanism, just so the public is aware and all the board members understand, there's no funding mechanism for this, but we have to realize that on our balance sheets. And is there any long-term strategic planning that you see that other school districts are doing to?
I think this was put in place to have everybody realize what we think are costing in, in future negotiations. Could be something that would be addressed.
So, so the bottom line is, we're spending more and maybe less.
I'm sorry?
We're spending more and we have less money coming in.
Promise them more.
Promising a lot.
Is there any repercussions to, from the states or, or running a balance sheet negatively for a certain period of time?
We, I've been to some meetings with some funding people who have been there and they said they don't really, you know, look at that as a, because everybody's in the same boat.
Right.
You know, cities, towns, villages, we're all in the same boat, also districts, so they understand what's going on here. So this doesn't factor into your bond rating, it's all taken into consideration. So it's not negative impact and just looks kind of ridiculous.
We can't promise that for the future, but I can speak to, we just refinanced a long-term bond debt in May and we actually were able to, because of the other methods and the management of the excess fund balance and offsetting, in fact, the economic development that's happening within footprint of this school district, we actually were able to get from the bonding agencies an increase in our rating from an A to an A+. We didn't, we didn't feel any negative impacts for that in our financials. That's not to say that that won't change the future.
Right, I think if some districts, you know, maybe adjust their benefits and something where this calculation goes down over time and some other districts don't, I can think that might have a, then you're not playing on a level of playing field anymore. But right now, everybody's in the same playing field.
Ed?
Could you go, go to page 51? Could you clarify this information because I have a question on.
This is the schedule of the same, helping the school's employment benefits, health insurance for the retirees. This is the fourth year we've had to approve the liability.
Yeah, the U, the U A L.
That's the total, that's the actual liability as it's been created.
The percent, I'm talking about the U A L, that percent on color payroll, right?
Well, the 541, yeah.
The reason why I ask is, and I'm, I'm looking for you for what you might have seen in other districts, you know, the trend is similar in that when you look at year '09 to year '10, it's a 4% increase and then from '10 to '11 is an 8% increase and then from '11 to '12 is a 16% increase. So do we expect it to go 30% if the trend is the same to year '13 and is that? So do we expect it to go 30% if the trend is the same to year thirteen, if it is that, something that is a common trend?
I'm not sure what the trend is with, with other, other districts.
Ed?
I have a question also.
Oh, hold on.
I'll start you, how you doing?
I'm not really sure I know the answer to your question.
Because, because I'm largely a little bit, if I see it doubling every year.
Right.
Then it's looking like we're ruined, and we never, we'll never catch up.
The, the actuary is using your current payroll. It's age of your employees, and they factor all that in, so if your current graphics change, the calculation's going to change. Payroll goes down, and obviously, it's changed, but, you know, specifically aggressive to answer your question, I'm not sure there's.
Also the level of benefits that you promised in your collective bargaining agreements, what you promised to pay out as retiree benefits are factors in this calculation. That's what's driving the ninety-three million dollars. Those are past practices from past bargaining agreements and current bargaining agreements. So the impact on future, what's that ninety-three million going to be? Is it going to keep jumping seven or eight million dollars a year as we've seen for the last four years? Or is it going to be four million or five million, or is it going to be ten or twelve million? It's going to depend upon what we do with collective bargaining agreements. And also, the other number that is compared with our actual payroll in any given year, and you can see what that trend has been over the last four years, I would call that fairly consistent. We have, even though we've had some reduction, we were seventeen point four million, seventeen point nine million, eighteen point seven, and last year seventeen point two million in over active covered payroll. So the, the two comparisons, active payroll versus employee retiree health benefits are just two different data sets, and we're just saying retiree health benefits as a liability are five times what active payroll is.
Right.
One set of data points to compare. How those future trends go are going to depend on future budget challenges, whether that seventeen point two stays fairly flat, or decreases or increases as compared to other people, but also the ninety-three million, there's a whole different set of factors that bear on that actuarial calculation. Are people going to start dying sooner or living longer? Are we going to change the benefit calculations in the collective bargaining agreements? And also the pool of people available to retire? Is it five hundred people, or is it three hundred people? Because we had to downsize, all of those different factors play a part in that calculation. So it's hard to say what we've experienced in the last four years is a prediction of what the next twenty-six years will be, as we have to fully recognize this liability.
Right, but I'm not, I'm not as concerned about the next twenty-six years, what I'm concerned about is that this trend, this trend shows that in three years, we'll be at a hundred percent over the covered payroll. If the trend's the same, it's doubling, four, six, you know.
Another factor, two, they do a three-year, they do a calculation year one, and then every three years?
We're doing it every year, we're updating.
No, but they, they give you a.
Loan one every three, yeah.
Every third year, they do update your, your employee data, which may contribute to that, this fourth year being somewhat higher. The first, the first year is an actual calculation, the second year is another calculation based on the same data they have in year one. Year three the same way, and then year four was a, they sent all the data back to the actuaries to recalculate it. Could be, that could explain why it went up so much.
But it, but it's a previous system trend, and it's, it's not like it's a dual words, it's a previous system. And, and looking at the previous chart, um, the first quarter, you mentioned you showed a seven point seven, seven point seven increase, you know, seven point seven million increase with both of these trends, and, but, but what I'm concerned about is, is at some point, there's only so many teachers you can lay off before academic reasons, you're, you can't, you can't teach, you're an institution, so, um, and I don't think teachers want to have fifty kids in their class, right? So, so at some point, as, as the costs go up, and the dispatch goes up, and the kids in the classroom, there's going to be a point where she's almost no solution.
Good question, Mary. I don't understand how we could have gotten rid of twenty, over twenty percent of our workforce and still gone up that much.
Remember, this ninety-three million dollars is an actuarial calculation. Healthcare costs historically do not decrease.
I understand that.
Healthcare costs increase.
But if you've got sixty less people.
But people live longer.
Sixty less, sixty younger people, we still have so many people in payroll that are have a working workforce.
It doesn't make any sense to me that we're decreasing our employees and our liabilities going up.
But, remember, there's also, there's also, when somebody retires, often the spouse will come and get on the health line as well, and that's a trend they, they have to calculate on, right?
This is retiree benefits, which will, depending upon each bargaining agreement, could be a little bit different. Some of the agreements do call for wherever the employee at, was at at the time of retirement. If it's a family plan, then into retirement, they have access to family benefits as well.
So you're saying this is worst case scenario?
I'm, I'm not saying anything, this is actuarial.
No, no, say no.
This is reality.
No, it could be worse. It's wor, it's the worst case scenario.
No, it could be worse.
Because you're saying if they have, how could it get worse if they already have families?
Because it depends on economy, if, if interest rates or health insurance rates.
I understand that, but, yeah, but my point is always, she, they're calculating what they have now. So if you have family now, like, they're assuming that you have family, that's what I'm saying, so it's worst case scenario, because you might not have family by now.
No, because, because they're also taking into consideration how many people die who, you know, so it's not really worst case. Worst case is if everybody lives forever, and that's not how they actually, you know, they go by, by statistical trends, right?
Yeah, they, they do, they, the average of, I don't know, seventy percent are considered married with a family plan, there's an average there, it's not every specific employee.
And they do base it upon our real data. They take a census of all of our active employees, plus all of our retired employees, they take a census of actual health costs, and they pull the, the real data on the estimated lives the actuaries use for selling life insurance. And what, um, what the actuarial data points are in making these calculations. This is not something that the business office or even our CPA firm does. This is, this is an agency that is coordinated through co-serge to foci that is done with a consistent methodology for all public school districts.
There's no means to put aside a reserve.
There's no fund, there's no funding mechanism currently for this.
No, because of state.
This, so this is something that we face in our budget every.
No budget.
Right, it was an accounting announcement, a GAZB accountings announcement that we had to implement four years ago, but SED hasn't come along with a vehicle for us to begin funding for this potential liability that's out there.
That's an important thing for people to understand.
And what we've done, I mean, it's been pay-as-you-go. We've been paying retiree health benefits right along with active employee health benefits in our budget every year, and we, and we try to budget for that, what that is. And we've been doing it on a pay-as-you-go, go basis. The difference has been, four years ago, we also started to start recognizing as an expenditure every year, a pro-rated piece, a straight line, amortized piece of that liability, that big ninety-three million dollar liability that we have thirty years, if it's thirty years, do, at the end of thirty years, we fully will have that ninety-three million or whatever that number is on page thirteen on that balance sheet. It won't be the twenty-seven million anymore, it'll be a full ninety-three.
Those were some stakeholders.
Any other questions? Yes, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
General report, superintendent.
Um, I'm very, very grateful, mine, given that we've had several reports already given, and we probably ordered two times on board of this, uh, legal committee, um, other than a gracious segue eventually from Mr. Mary, I believe, when he gets his new report, that we did, uh, culminated views today for the interim, I'm sure we'll have some information later with you on that point, so.
Do you have that, Chris? Mary?
Yes, a couple quick updates. At the last monthly meeting, I had reported that I was behind, had not completed the state aid claim forms yet, I wasn't able to complete them, they were filed on October twenty-sixth, actually, one week earlier than last year, but I was still a month late. They're actually due the first of September, they're based upon our audited financial statements, so this kind of all came together and culminated about the same time, so rest assured, those forms had to be filed, which means, the criticalness of that is that that's the database that the state pulls from when we get the governor's budget proposal from February first, the revenue, the state aid revenue numbers are as accurate as they can be, they need all our audited financial results in there to know what eleven, twelve look like, so those are in there, and I'm expecting as, um, accurate projections for aid from the governor as we can get. The second, um, thing I wanted to point out was last week, um, New York State School Board officials organization issued a report to all of us, which was barely alarming. On November fourth, a sound salary report indicating that the TRS rates, which is the teacher's retirement system rate, were expected to increase up to between fifteen and a half and sixteen and a half percent. To put that in perspective, this year, for the twelve thirteen budget, our blended rate's eleven point eight four percent. What that means is, just to put it in an example, on an average sixty-five thousand dollar salary teacher, at this year's rate, eleven point eight four percent, we're paying New York State seven thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars in retirement benefits. We don't have a choice, that's a mandated retirement system that we are required to do. That same retirement contribution for next year, for thirteen, fourteen, moving to a sixteen point five percent rate factor would be ten thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. That in and by itself, that one budget line is going to see a thirty-nine percent increase, which amounts to three thousand twenty-nine dollars on sixty-five thousand dollars salary, just to kind of put it in perspective. I just wanted to pass this along, as soon, as soon as I read it, heard about it, I've also heard that the ERS, the non-instructional staff employee retirement system is looking at similar increases. And part of, part of the explanation on that is that there, um, the core returns in the global capital markets are driving the force behind recent rate increases. The one-year rate of return on system assets within TRS from fiscal year end of June thirty of two thousand twelve is twenty percent, so, um, just, just a bit of information. On tonight's agenda, we have several budget transfers in there, I wanted to just point out, I had also mentioned in past, um, meetings that I would be bringing these forward as soon as the dust settled and we had everybody reassign. The budget numbers that we're working with are what they were back in March and April when we went through people from everybody, but we had reduced staff, re-signed staff, moved people around, moved seniority, some people moved to other people, moved from building to building, so, as dust is settled, we've got the reports, these budget transfers are just realigning the money from the budget lines into the places where the people really are. So it could be either non-instructional, instructional, even in a coaching area, coaching stipends between instructional and non-instructional. The August thirty-first, year-end grants, we had Title I, we have Title II, and we've had under Title I school improvement grants, have all been formally closed out, finalized reports have been filed with New York State. And I also wanted to point out that the incarcerated youth program, which is a mandated program that Big Town School District runs, because Clinton County Jail is within the footprint of our district, is coordinated by Gil Murray, we've just completed the final cost reports for that service as well, it's budgeted for in a general fund, but it is treated by New York State like a grant and aid. We had a maximum aid allocation of two hundred and two thousand dollars for the year, and that's based upon estimated FTEs of students, it's a very transient student population. Gil keeps very detailed documented information, we actually staff all of those students. Our cost for the year was a hundred and eight thousand, we did a very proficient job managing that program last year, out of the two hundred and two that we have available is reimbursement to the district, so.
Does, does that mean that we had less allocated for next year, or?
No, no, that, they calculate maximum aid just based upon the estimated FTEs or student populations in that facility, um, which projected in New York State and New York City for, so, the program has historically been, um, manned, no better word, manned by part-time instructors coming in and doing bits of, and pieces of what Gil needs for an overall program. The last thing, it says there is a budget transfer that is not, not, uh, for budget reassignment, and that was for the cafeteria budget. We've spoken, um, several times, the board has, about our student charging policy specifically for the elementary schools, we don't really have a, a hard, fast charging policy like we do for the middle school and high school, and we'd always talk about, um, reversing the cafeteria for having extended now two lunches for elementary students, and where are those after a period of time of efforts to collect, help them be collected, we have it now out there, um, it's a little bit under five hundred dollars for all buildings within the district, this is cleaning up balances, I want to say that we're over a year old.
Is there a question on that, when, uh, when they have a parent, they, they can't get the money from a parent, then, does that kid get free all year? Like, you're saying it's unpaid, unpaid, they will still compare it, just don't pay, and then, but then, and as soon as it goes back next year, they start again?
The balances right now are still there. This is, several attempts are made through the year to collect on these, phone calls, emails, and they just don't get paid.
Okay, but what if, what if a parent never, never wants to pay?
That's the point we're at right now.
Yeah, okay.
That's what this money is.
So, we need a.
And we can't do that because that's making them part of the free or reduced program without completing an application.
Okay.
And it is something, the board did have a cafeteria committee, um, that Roxanne and I sat down with, giving district president, and we went over, I don't remember, a five or ten-year financial analysis of the cafeteria committee, and reviewed, um, we published the report, um, with not student identification, but, um, blank ID numbers, just to say this building had four students, this building had three, so there's, we don't know, um, we don't know any specifics, just that there are old balances out there.
Do you think that's something we need to look at again?
Yeah. Charge policy. With, with all the technology updates, if you're to contact parents, it's just getting the money back in.
I, I, it was me, I'm the one who was behind it, because I don't want the kids to go hungry, parents are pants.
Yeah, I know.
But, but understandably, if someone's going to go forever, we'd have to come up with another recourse, I still want the kids to eat, but.
Sometimes it takes that second title, you know, that, not my voice, but Mary's or Eric's, and that helps too, so, you know, I pull them in, try to get them to help, but some are just not collectible. This is the, we process, this is a point now where it's going to the cafeteria committee, and we've said this needs to be paid, and it's gone through. But I do think it does need to look now.
Any other questions?
Mr. Curry, or? How are you? Uh, hello, everyone, um, it's been a while, but I'll try to be brief on the studio report, uh, give you a general overview of what's been going on with our students. Uh, just came to the end of first quarter this past week, uh, second quarter began today, and I know a lot of teachers are busy getting their grades in, but, um, I know seniors are finishing up, uh, plans for next year, whether it be college, workforce, going into service, I know deadlines are coming up on a lot of college applications, and a lot of the students are busy. Fall sports, uh, just finished, and my sports have just begun in the past two weeks, and I know clubs and organizations are well underway with their activities, um, this year, our school has youth clubs such as the Dance Club, and I know the Model UN, uh, is well underway as well, getting prepared for upcoming conferences, um, and the NHS has been, or National Honor Society's been working and looking to many charitable organizations. Freshmen have pretty much adjusted to the school now with, uh, the Help Five Peer Connecting Program. The school's music programs are working very hard right now to prepare for the winter concert that's coming up next week, no, next week. And, uh, I think that we're all in need of a good vacation, but, uh, other than that, I think things are looking pretty good.
Are you going to give us next week off?
I hope so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee report.
Okay, on the bullying task force committee, um, this year, as I said, we're emphasizing, trying to emphasize getting parent involvement. Okay, uh, we had a workshop last week, and our, our technology department had two phone calls, mobile calls going out to parents, hoping to get parents there. It was, uh, an excellent session, there were breakout sessions, the state police were there, um, telling about cyberbullying, um, they had panels. They had panels, Stephanie Goran was there, and it was, it was an excellent workshop. I was very disappointed, there was myself and four parents there. So if anybody has any idea how to get parents out, let me know. We've done, you know, what, what, I mean, I can't imagine anything else. The local calls went to every single parent of students in the building, letting them know about it. You know, there's, I was just disappointed in the, in the turnout for Beaventown.
We published also the company website.
Yeah, and it was on the website, it was, yeah, it was, I mean, what more can we do? You know, it's...
I find it funny that we have so many people calling complaining about kids being bullied.
Yeah.
I don't want to take advantage of the fact that...
This is available, yeah. It's, it's just unbelievable.
We did a nice job with putting, you know, the information out there that way. But if you could, we put it more marketing, or paper, or...
They, yeah, they, they were there, they were all open to, you know, it's just, we have to get parents involved in the, in the, especially with the new DASL Act in schools, it's just, they have to, they have to become aware of, of what's going on, and they're gonna just have to get out somehow.
To your question, was the regional sponsors, if you will, activity at the college, so that the college did its own marketing arms, if you will, and I'm sure all the other institutions had their respective roles to play. Ours was, as Mrs. Stone's pointed out, ours was, we have a reservation on the website, and also use our automated caller system. One was to, in less than seven days, something is coming, but here's your first, you did that on your calendar, and then I think two days prior to the event, we did the second call to say, don't pay in two days, you know, that kind of message.
Is that a specific age group that was local called, or was it just middle school, or was it the whole, the whole district?
Yeah, and we did families, families too, that's the way the system is set up. We could sort, I mean, Derek can't be here tonight, but he could explain why we could sort populations if we really wanted to, but we didn't in this case, we just, let's go with our full, full enrollment, if you will, of families. And who knows who might have the interest to be there, you don't have to be a high school, a parent of a high school, or a middle school student, and it's served for kindergarten or first graders, so we just market it to everybody.
Any other questions? Operations, have any, have you done that? I heard it isn't here, is, can you, wanna say on that?
There are things to break toward the court, but because one of the people in there has to go away, I don't think they have anything, they don't have anything to move on.
And the other committees?
Policy, we did that, and we did review several polit, policies concerning building use, and we did make a change only to one, we actually created a separate policy. Last year, I gave a contingency budget, we all adopted our policy concerning facilities use and charging for facilities. And we've made a non-contingency policy and a policy for facilities. Those were all included in that.
Any other committees to report? Yes?
We met today to review school minutes, I'm not very well, but we just, depending on how, and we talked about that one day, but I think we'll have a resort, or is there any other?
No, I think just that, the process, I certainly appreciate the way we get input from as many diverse points of view on most important stat, most important position, and I believe, probably through executive session, because it will involve contract terms, if there's a contract to, to extend to somebody that's on the forward and wanting to get his office's questions. Today was a good day.
Yes, Mr. Curry.
Obviously, we also met, and basically talked about our audit, so I mean, it's very clear that we went through a wonderful audit, but we did discover that we actually need some information, so, please, we're gonna get to that. We were discussing clubs and after-school activities, and what we discovered is that we actually need some more information, and I think that's something that we need to generate for us. What we need is a history, I would say go back to maybe the last year. It's one of the things that might have actually kept us on our previous audit, we need, the advisors need to submit, we're writing reports in thirty minutes, and we need a summer data ticket, and recruit officers on, and things like that. If possible, we'd like to talk about more, you know, December audit, and so possibly have the information before our next December meeting, if you'd appreciate it.
Go ahead, Mr. Curry.
A lot of the curators basically, in the facilities document, there is a lot of reports, part of the insurance and the orders and all that, so, so that we can, as far as the past, that our some, we're looking at all the audits, and we need to be, we also need to be, we need assurances, and so, we need to, just to see where everybody is, and
The building use requirements, there's actually an electronic form that's generated by anybody that wants to use the facility, it runs through a certain community, the Lees and Brown superintendent, and on that form that they fill out, it advises them of the need for insurance, it advises them of the need, that there needs to be somebody in charge, supervisor, so what isn't addressed in the policy, some of the extra fine details on how it works on a day-to-day basis is actually in that form that's on the internet, that somebody asks if a certain room or area of the building is available to be used, and that's kind of how buildings and grounds manages, who gets to be aware, because oftentimes there's multiple requests for the library at the same time, or one of the gyms at the same time, and the only way to kind of manage that is for the end to manage it electronically through that formal process. Under the audit committee, there was one other thing that we did bring up for Mike, which was the board members had asked that we have the found report that went to all board members, we only had enough copies for cost savings for the board members, but the electronic version of this report was posted to the district's website, so it was available for the public, any employees and the administration to review.
On the operations, I just did a little bit of general information of the last meeting. As you know, we, we were talking about the exterior exit to the girls locker room, which we had a problem with. Well, when we sent it down to the SED, they said, well, you need one for the men's locker room now too. So, they came, head tech came up, and they're gonna pursue, after talking to the operations committee, not going to the outside, coming through the, the faculty bathrooms of both instances, through the faculty bathroom piece, locker room. They're gonna plan to go through them, they come through the walls out, so that we don't have that cold air coming into a bathroom, coming into a shower area. So that's, they're gonna have to redo that, come back to us, but they're gonna come back next month. So, further along the line, now we know where they gotta shoot to do it, where before we hadn't really made up our minds, because you had to give us the prateries. But the prateries are doing it externally, it's gonna be about the same price as doing the other, two, two of both internally, that was a good factor. So, it's less money, well, it's less money for that, and then hopefully that'll cover the cost of the other costs.
Any other committees? Move on to the minutes, resolved that Board of Education does hereby approve the minutes at a meeting of Board of Education held on ten nine to ten thirty. Motion by April? Second by Debbie. All in favor? Result that Board of Education does hereby accept the minutes of committee meeting held on eleven six. Moved by Debbie, seconded by Richard. Any discussion? All in favor? Yes. Ayes have it. New business, CSC and CPSC recommend a result that Superintendent of Schools recommends to Board of Education the approval of the CSC recommendations dated eleven thirteen twelve. Motion by Debbie, seconded by Kathy. All in favor? Yes. Ayes have it. Item B, resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to Board of Education the approval of the CPSC recommendations dated eleven thirteen twelve. Motion by Debbie, seconded by Kathy. All in favor? Against. Ayes have it. Resignation, resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to Board of Education to accept resignation from Patty Gallagher and Jolie Vito as newspaper yearbook club advisors for the Commonwealth Ed. Motion. Motion by Richard, seconded by Debbie. All in favor? Against. Ayes have it. Appointments, resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to Board of Education following permanent civil service appointments as indicated. Motion by Richard, seconded by Debbie. All in favor? Against. Ayes have it. Result that Superintendent of Schools recommends to Board of Education to approve the following substitute appointments beginning on the date indicated. Seconded by Colleen. All in favor? Against. Item C, resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to Board of Education to approve the following temporary on-call appointments beginning on the date indicated. Motion. Motion by Kathy, seconded by Debbie. All in favor? Against. Ayes have it. Item D, resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to Board of Education the following winter athletic positions for the two thousand twelve thirteen school year as indicated. Debbie? Seconded by Kathy. All in favor? Against. Ayes have it. Item E, resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to Board of Education following individuals as coaches for the Lady Eagles hockey team for the two thousand twelve thirteen school year at no cost to the district pending receipt, funds from the Lady Eagles organization. Motion by April? Seconded by Colleen. All in favor? Against. Ayes have it. Item F, resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to Board of Education to approve the following extracurricular appointments for two thousand twelve thirteen school year as indicated. Motion by Debbie? Seconded by Kathy. All in favor? Against. Ayes have it. Item G, resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to Board of Education to amend the appointment of the Model UN advisors from the board meeting minutes of ten nine twelve and the name of Carlos Madden to the list of the Chan, of John Chapman and Scott Dummer. The rate of pay is amended from eight seventy-four each to five eighty-two sixty-six each. Motion by Richard? Seconded by Kathy. All in favor? Against. Item H, resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to Board of Education to appoint the following volunteer fitness center coordinators. Motion by Richard? Seconded by Debbie. All in favor? Against. Ayes have it. Item I, resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to Board of Education to appoint the following fitness center community supervisors. motion by April? Seconded by Debbie. All in favor? Against. Ayes have it. Under miscellaneous, we may, resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to Board of Education the approval of the athletic merger with Seton Jetham Central High School for the Lady Eagles hockey program for the two thousand twelve thirteen school year, with the understanding that all operating costs, including expenses that will provided by the Lady Eagles Hockey Association of Shaysay. Motion by Kathy? Second. Seconded by Colleen. Question?
Okay, so, we're merging with Seton, but Shaysay is included, so, this is from when we were, from our program last year, and everyone continued...
They are working with us, but they're bringing on an extra school.
Seton was not included in the original merger earlier, and they're adding, requesting to add that to school, quite frankly.
And still Shaysay could be included.
It is, it's all under Shaysay.
Any other questions? All in favor? Against. Ayes have it. Item B, resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to Board of Education to grant permission for one Beaventown Central School District student to participate at PHS as an independent swimmer for the two thousand twelve season at no cost to the district. Who was the first one?
Doesn't matter.
Debbie? I mean, Debbie was... All in favor? Against. Ayes have it.
Only one swimmer?
Only one.
One swimmer.
Bring them all over. We only had two before, didn't we?
Item C, resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to Board of Education to adopt the following board and district goals for two thousand twelve thirteen. Motion by Richard? Seconded by Debbie? Any discussion on this? All in favor? Against. Ayes have it. Policies, resolved that Board of Education does hereby approve the following policies. Motion. Need a second? Seconded by Debbie? Any discussion on this? All in favor? Against. Ayes have it. Financial, resolved that Board of Education accept the following reports as presented by the Audit Committee. Richard? Seconded by April? All in favor? Against. Ayes have it. Item C, resolved that Board of Education acknowledged receipt of the board reports for June two thousand twelve through October two thousand twelve. Motion by Debbie? Seconded by Kathy. All in favor? Against. Ayes have it. Item C, resolved that Board of Education acknowledged receipt on the budget transfer result for June two thousand twelve and due to, due to, and... Motion by Richard? Seconded by April. All in favor? Against. Item D, resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to Board of Education to approve the following transfers of the five thousand... Okay, Richard needs the whole page. Seconded by Colleen.
Debbie, your explanation, Mary earlier.
Yes. Okay, we need a roll call.
Eric Anderson, April Bingo, yes. Kathy Buckley, yes. Leonard King?
Yes.
Richard Levine? Ed Marin? Debbie Casno? Colleen Stone? Sue Tremblay?
Item E, resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends, recommends to Board of Education to approve the tax collectors' report from town of Plasford, from the towns of Alphatauna, Beaventown, and Shaysay, and also certification of school re-levee report in the amount of one million sixty-four thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-five cents, and said re-levee report to be returned to Quicken County by eleven fifteen twelve so that the tax may be relieved, as certified by the tax code. Motion by Richard? Seconded by Kathy, or Debbie? Again, roll call.
Eric Anderson, April Bingo, yes. Kathy Buckley, yes. Leonard King?
Yes.
Richard Levine? Ed Marin? Debbie Casno? Yes. Colleen Stone?
Item A, resolved that the Audit Committee recommends to Board of Education to accept the audit report presented by Conroy, what was the title? Tremblay. Motion by Debbie? Seconded by Richard? All in, what, roll call.
Eric Anderson, April Bingo, yes. Kathy Buckley, yes. Leonard King?
Yes.
Richard Levine? Ed Marin? Debbie Casno? Yes. Colleen Stone? Yes. Sue Tremblay?
Item G, resolved that Superintendent of Schools recommends to Board of Education to accept the fifty... to accept the fifty thousand dollar senatorial grant and aid at the two thousand twelve school year and currently increase the revenue budget and expenditure budget to accept the grant. Richard, Richard put the motion. Seconded by Kathy. Roll call.
Eric Anderson, April Bingo, yes. Kathy Buckley, yes. Leonard King.
Yes.
Richard Levine.
Yes.
Ed Marin.
Aye.
Debbie Passno.
Yes.
Pauline Stone.
Yes.
Steve Tremblay.
I hope you're not going to do it like that.
God, I love the senators.
Yes.
I need one thing on that. From a business office perspective, when you receive a grant and aid, especially when the grant is not just revenue, but there's expenditures on the budget, I need a specific line item such that the budget will be increased by for this particular senatorial grant and aid.
Would you happen to have one with you?
I do have.
We have a, we have a safety stone right there.
Yes. We, I, we created an account just as a holding bucket for that money, so it's still subject to, it can't be spent. The board needs to do these budget transfers that we do that are over five thousand, need to go into whatever account it's going to be spent on, but in the interim, we receive the money, so I need to create some expenditure account. So we created an account just called Senatorial Grant and Aid Expenditures to have an account number to be able to increase the revenue budget and increase the expenditure budget without committing to what it's going to be spent on yet. We will then modify that when the board determines specifically what line items they want to spend that on.
Can you give us another? Can you give us something?
So the number, the account number budget line would be A twenty-one ten dot four fifty-three dash zero 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 zero, and we need, it's within the program teaching and grant and set allocation. I would only ask the board to consider that when we, when you do decide how that would be spent, that some piece of that could be allocated towards equipment, which is a contingent budget item. The, we did not budget money in equipment district wide to keep expenditures down the amount. Actually, I said we did not budget any. There's a minimum amount which is budgeted under Gary Lambert's technology budget, which is the software and computer aid to be able to maximize the aid coming in from the state. You spend the dollar, you get the dollar back, so the, the money and equipment is just limited to that amount, which is a very small number. So I'm asking for district wide, some amount to be put into two hundred code, which is the equipment code. The only way in your five thousand dollar budget transfers, we can't move money from any of these other lines into a two hundred code because that's not a code. The only way to get that is from revenue sources because it's a restricted account. You can move out of restricted back into any of these codes, but we can't take from these codes and put it back into that.
Is it something else we know?
Um, no.
Okay.
No, I just, I want to put that out there for consideration that when you decide how you're going to divvy up that fifty thousand, that some consideration will be given to that. And I'm not, it's not just computer aid. It could be a desk, it could be a chair, it could be a phone, it could be a fax machine, it could be a wheelchair, anything that's of a long-term nature is kind of an asset.
Oh, then my motion to move this one into that account line.
That code number?
Yes.
I would add, I'm piggybacking a little bit on Mary's comments, certainly with that amount of money that was not planned for, other than we were given notifications to be coming our way. The list of goals to have ideas how to spend it is long, but I would like to present options for your consideration at the next board meeting for you to say yes, no, move it, new ideas, et cetera. But we will not let it sit there long, a lot of requests to be taken in various places.
Was that Mary to you? This is a senatorial grant. Is there, does it come from a particular senator, or is this the state standing there?
She did send us that, yes.
So I guess what I'm trying to get is, is this something that was allocated because of some education philosophy and is something that we want to.
Yes.
So we continue to get this probably?
It, it comes, are there any strings attached? No.
Although, but is there, is there a philosophy? Does this person say somebody to the ones who see?
There's discretionary, here's a shock, here's a shock. The legislature has discretionary funds that are built into the budget over a period of years sometimes. The senators collectively across the entire state have a freedom, if you will, to clean up all of these balances that remain, and if there's money still left in their amount, kind of their, not their personal account, but kind of their account, they can make decisions as to where to send the money. Sometimes it gets targeted, usually not, because by targeting it, it imposes on the giver that there's a need waiting for it to be spent on, and maybe that's not true. So, and this particular case, the money is unfettered in terms of any description, any requirements within, and other districts in our area have in the past received amounts, and not all, all do, and our term, if you will, our share this time is fifty thousand dollars.
If you happen to be W Lors, would any of our elected officials certainly thank them and let them know how important it is for our district to receive their support?
State.
State.
That's state. Yes, we would send a thank, obviously a thank you, not on behalf of the board, but sometimes it gets lost in mail and tons and tons of mail, so if you happen to run into it, we'd send it, we'd have to say something. There it is.
Attendance of the school boards association meeting.
No.
No, because it's the same as the last one, where we lost to go, but still, if you're going to go, if you're not going to go, don't put your name down, you're still twelve bucks or whatever it is.
What's, what's the subject here?
It is going to be our commissioner of education will be there this night.
Yep. Describing, I'm sure, or tackling a whole host of issues that confront public schools in New York State, and not the least of which, I'm sure, is APPR legislation, state funding, board of regents activity, its wishes for the future, all of those kinds of topics. And it, past practice holds true, would be a little bit of Q and A opportunity from the floor, just to ask much into mixed statements.
I'm going to go through it.
I'm welcome.
I haven't met the one for a while.
Yeah, I'm going to see.
Yeah, we've got all the. If you're going, then we go to Kelly. Because we'll have your name under that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Did you get everybody?
No, no, it's not Paul.
Paul, please? We got it, okay.
Westside.
Westside.
So everybody gives their name that wanted to go. Public comment, ten minutes?
I actually want to put something up.
Oh, there'll be time. Yeah, there'll be time. Public comment? Anybody? Yes?
Ten hour, I just want to congratulate the board on their work on a fitness center, and I like the figures that came in on the funding, because it's known for us. And I want to thank you all for the effort and time to put into things, and a lot of times people don't say it, but I think we have a good school board. We may not always agree, but we have a good school board.
Anybody else for comment? Debbie, I'm sorry, I jumped over, go ahead.
That's okay. But as far as the fitness center goes, we were hoping for open data from Monday, I think it's during the board approval.
I don't think so, the only, what's pending, if you don't mind, is the inspection of the equipment, which was done today.
It just happened to be fully completed there. My understanding is there are a couple of minor items, I want to say an internal battery of some machine needs to be replaced with a safety shield and sheets to work manually, just the screen isn't necessarily getting all the oxygen in that. And there's one other thing that he has to fix that requires a ball bearing, but he thought he had one in his truck, so he will be back tomorrow to make that repair.
So official open data, do not think it requires a resolution to do it as much as celebration on the website that, here we go, and here are all the policies and procedures, et cetera, will be written on the website as well.
Okay, so we can proceed with that.
I have one question. Do we, are we going to have a, a contract to keep machines together, you'll start opening every month, whatever?
We, the district has had a maintenance contract that requires inspections every six months. Kind of went by the wayside last year, but there has been a history of every six months that equipment is inspected. It's now on other people's radar string, so it's all to where they just, one person can kind of track that. The only thing I wanted to mention, Debbie, all the volunteers that we had to coordinate, clean the machines, I don't know if running tail, I mean, I don't just mean in general, there was some type of maintenance that went along with it. And since we didn't have a person that, when the inspector was there today, he did that, and he commented that the coordinators in there need to do that, so someone here will be trained so that they can train people, or he will come on a six-month day, come back, and he'll let everybody know that he's going to be here so he can do that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Sorry, because I guess there's my question, we don't have. Does it repair?
Yeah, it's a thing.
Okay, so.
A company called, it's a fitness, I'm not sure where you're at, it has to travel here, which is why we wanted to get them repaired, so we could say he's being often traveling.
I want to have one more question.
Yes.
One of our goals, one of the district goals was to look at the possible consolidation of the K two with three five, and April and I are slated to help that up, but I think it would be good if you could get another board member to talk, I mean, to set up an initial meeting, someone else, someone else to help join in on that one, that's, it's helping. Paulie, or Ed?
Yeah, I think it works.
Paulie?
Kathy?
I would like to do that, because I actually am part of the bus college year ago.
That was my understanding from Eric, that you guys were working together on that end of it.
So I think that we, either we work machines, I think that would be a nice perspective to add to your group, whether you prefer to have someone.
Yeah, four or more.
No. I guess, I guess the way I understood it was that you guys were taking, taking on the portion of it already. I knew that. So you would be in addition to what we're doing. Yes.
So it's up to you.
Same. No, it'd be the same thing. All part of the safety. Perfect. Yes.
Yeah, if you want.
Could I offer or project out some dates and that kind of thing, et cetera, with, with the conversation going on?
Well, we wouldn't even initially.
Yeah.
So, yes, we need to get that some.
Debbie, you asked about the safety committee also.
Yes.
Joanne, I don't know where she's at on that, she was checking. Joanne, where are we at, ours for the safety committee meeting?
We've secured a number, if I could, we've secured a number of volunteers from the various schools who will serve in the safety committee, they have same numbers for each building, but names. So really, I think, looking down to Joanne to affirm this, I think we're in the stage of just offering a date for the safety committee meeting and advertise it and bring the groups of people who have already committed to us to be on the committee to show up.
So who does that?
We would, again, do that, happy to do it through a calendar announcement, propose it, and we get feedback from all people.
Three thirty? Because it's members, we have people coming from the building, it's building at three thirty start time?
Can we make three thirty start?
Or later?
Four is kind of.
We get two, maybe we probably want to have those people.
Yeah, you would.
Okay, wait, is that, we got two for three?
We only made up three.
I'll make it happen, just give me a date, I'll get some.
So I'll have to.
Okay.
Yes. Huh? Yes. Well, there will be.
We need some of the. Who will it get?
Okay, we are going to have an executive.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can we go back to Mrs. Passno's on the consolidation, when there'll be, it will be April, Debbie, and Kathy, and me, and Paul, and Pauline. Okay, so is that going to be the committee, and we'll advertise those out, and we'll bring managers in?
Yep.
Yes.
Return to you.
And the chair will be?
We don't, it'll be determined, they have to pick.